Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Tonight, we have everybody here, except Ashley. Everybody got a board agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I will approve.
Okay, a motion from Rick, a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Carried. Any public input? Nobody here, so I'm assuming we have none. Okay, then we're down to electing officers. And the first one up is the chairperson. And I just might offer, if one of these comes up and somebody's interested, just say something. So we have an idea who might be interested in them. As usual, we don't have a lot of time to talk about all this stuff. So, we're looking for nominations for chairpersons. Are there any nominations?
Thomas, would you be interested if I nominate you?
Yep.
I would nominate Thomas.
Okay, we have Thomas nominated. Are we, are there any further nominations?
Jake, are you interested too?
That's okay, if Thomas wants it, you can have it certainly.
Maggie, would you be interested?
If that's, I mean, if that's what, if you want it, I think.
It's open to anybody that's interested really at this point in time, that's how I look at it.
I think if he's interested, I support him.
So you would decline?
If he's, yes.
Okay. Personally, I'd just like to see everybody try these things.
Yep.
Okay, are there any further nominations?
Bruce, are you interested at all?
No.
Had to ask.
Rick, are you interested?
Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast the ballots.
I move to close.
Go ahead.
I move to close nominations.
Okay, we may make a motion to close nominations. And would you like to do an unanimous ballot along with that?
Yes.
Okay, so Cheryl moves to close the nominations and let's see, and move to cease nominations and cast unanimous ballot. Okay? That's our motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Rick. Any further discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Carried. Thomas?
Alright.
Chair, now so go ahead.
Well, we will now recognize nominations for a position of clerk. And Jake, if you're interested, I would nominate you for a clerk position.
Sure, unless Maggie wants to keep clerk.
I think it's good to change it out.
Okay.
And anybody, are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? There are no further nominations, entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast unanimous ballot.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
A motion from Rick with a second from Bruce. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And moved. We are now going to recognize nominations for position of treasurer. Are there any nominations?
Cheryl, are you willing to continue?
I'm willing to continue, if someone else wants to try it, it's a very interesting position. It takes a little bit of time and a little bit of research, but it's very doable and, like I said, very interesting. But I will take the position again if no one else wants it.
I'll oblige, Cheryl.
Rick nominated Cheryl for the treasurer position.
Are you interested?
I would be, but I mean, that's on a good, Cheryl, you do a great job, if you want to keep it.
I won't give it up if you want it.
Looking forward just.
Something new.
Okay.
I'd be interested, but again, I can step back if you're like, you want to do it again.
It's up to you, if you want to try it, go ahead.
We'll get one more position, which is
Vice chair.
The vice chair.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I'll entertain a motion to cast unanimous ballot for Cheryl, who remains the treasurer.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, a second from Jake. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And moved. We are now going to recognize nominations for position of vice chairperson.
Would you be interested in that, Maggie?
Take, nominate Maggie for position of vice chair.
Would you be interested in that position, Rick?
No, I'd like to see Maggie do it.
That was very bold, Rick.
Never had a people, a chairperson, so something I'd like to see. But for now, I would like to be the vice chair.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Maggie as the vice chair.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion from Cheryl, a second from Bruce. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Alright, so Matt, do you want to take over this, or you want me to?
Yeah, I just, I need to keep notes here, so I'm just trying, I'm trying to catch up. Alright, so assignments of committees, I just want to, I know Rick had emailed me and I think he's kind of open to whatever, so there's no boxes checked, but he's open to anything. The spreadsheet that was included, it did have who is serving in the 2020 committee assignments. And then also a space to elect interest or select if you were interested for 2021. I don't really see a lot of changes with any of the committees. The only thing that I would make sure the board understands is we did move the transportation into the negotiating piece. Just a reminder, we did just finish up that, the last two years of that. So in calendar year 21, I don't necessarily see transportation meeting at all unless there was an issue that arose. Otherwise, yeah, Thomas, I'll turn it back over to you to find out everything else.
Alright, so just as well start at the top here. With looking at committee assignments, Minnesota State High School League, I've been on the last couple of years. Doesn't meet, you know, there's not a lot that goes on with it. Anybody interested in taking that, certainly can.
Why don't you put me down for that one?
We can put Rick down for the usually keep those notes yet.
Yep, I will, I will go and put the notes on it, and then I'll clean this up and send the list out to everybody.
Okay. Schools equity and education, Jake, again, you've been on it last, interested in maintaining that position. Anybody else interested in schools for equity?
It's for Jake.
Yeah.
I think this is one you should stick with it for the law.
Yeah. I would.
I think it doesn't, it's kind of a more of a flowing thing.
I agree.
I would agree with that. It's not my strong suit either. Sterns County Family Services Collaborative meets twice a year. Previously, I was an alternate, Cheryl, you were on it. And I can, I can take a role in that position as well, or we can flip flop, or anybody else interested in that?
If you're interested in it, I'm fine with flip flopping, it's totally up to you.
Yeah. I certainly would, I didn't do, myself personally, looked at my committees the last couple of years. I didn't have a lot of meeting committees doing a lot of outside things, so there's a few things I kind of would like to start getting to some of those meetings, just to kind of see what those are a little more like, so. And my current employment situation allows for a little bit more flexibility for some of those meetings as well, so.
Yeah, that happens in the afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, so I think flipping, flip flop us and myself and Cheryl is
Unless someone else wants to.
Yeah, unless somebody else wants to jump in on that too.
If not, I can be alternate, I never had to call on you last year, so.
Yeah.
Only twice a year.
Legislative liaison, again, Jake, I think we kind of follow in line with the school equity education. Just unless anybody's really interested and wants to speak up differently, we can keep Jake. Moving with that. Plus Central Education District. You know, we had Maggie and Cheryl, you guys were
I was alternate, and I didn't have to fill in for Maggie at all. That's another thing that I think kind of has a flow to it in the
Yep.
So do I.
So if you're
Maintain status quo with that.
If someone else is really interested.
Okay. That sounds good. Community education, previously Ashley, Cheryl marked some interest in that. Does anybody else have an opinion on that? And I guess how do we want to handle Ashley with committees if they're not here and, you know, it's
Well, she's defenseless, so we're gonna
I was just gonna ask that question, if she didn't fill out and she's not here, what
Is she interested in anything?
Has anybody had conversations with her?
I haven't.
I have not spoken to Ashley, so I do not know what her interest level is.
And like, should we have everybody on the board at least on a committee, otherwise she will be on anything, I don't
Yeah, and that's, that was my
It blew up a little bit.
Yeah, that was my thought too, I think we should still, you know, take some of these committees as we're coming down the line. It's just a matter of, do we, do we keep her status as is, as was, so it's not a change from from what she knew previously to this meeting? And then, and or, yeah, anybody else have any suggestions or ideas?
Does anyone have any insight into what her interest is at this point?
Mm-mm.
I know she's a busy lady.
I have no idea what her schedule looks like either.
That's what I mean. I don't know how we can assign her to multiple committees and, right?
As I say, I think my best, best bet would be just to have her maintain what she, you know, was previously on, so it's, it's not changing an interest from years past and or, you know, hopefully if her schedule's And in reality, if something were to change for her, and she says this committee meets four times a year, just really was a pain in my rear end for my schedule, we can still switch this later. This isn't something that we have to be locked into for the next year, and sorry, she has to do it. We can still have that conversation with her later, so I would say let's just, let's, if everyone's okay with it, let's keep her on the committees that she was on. And then, again, unless Cheryl, you're interested, if you really want to be on that, I don't think she would mind losing it, it's just
Yeah.
I wouldn't give her anything new.
As a backup, why don't we put her on it as a primary and me as an alternate?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
And then I don't need to go unless she
Unless she can't make it.
Can't make it, how does that work?
I'm okay with that, Matt. Everybody else?
I've been on it before, it's very interesting to me.
That was, one seemed interesting as well. World's Best Workforce, this was previously myself and
What, the advisory committee?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Skipped one.
Skipped one.
Community added.
Oh, there it is, yep, sorry. She was on that, I had interested in that, I think same thing, keep her on there, you can put me as an alternate or whatnot.
And I said And she's still involved, but if need be.
Yep. World's Best Workforce, myself, Cheryl and Maggie previously, I can certainly go on again, does anybody else have any interest in in joining that, you know, we didn't meet the two times this last year.
Talk about that's going to expand into a bigger committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think right now the best thing to do is to continue to appoint three board members for World's Best Workforce. This is going to turn into a district advisory committee that's going to take up other topics besides World's Best Workforce. But I do think logically, the three people that are associated with this would probably morph into that district advisory piece as well. I'm hopeful that district advisory is up and ready to go March-ish, with really their calendar is really going to probably flow from like April through February type of a calendar, once it gets up and is established, so.
Interest from others, again, I didn't unclick, uncheck my interest for that, just, I was more kind of looking for other things possibly, but
That's twice a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a bigger
It's gonna turn into more.
Forward, it's probably gonna meet every other month, for the months of April through that February time period. So, you know, you'll have a little bit of a break in there, but it is probably going to be meeting, I would bet five times a year, once it gets up and we're fully accessing it for everything that we plan on using it for.
Well, you were on it.
Yep, and again, I can remain on it.
So, we kind of started a few years ago to try and have the chairperson on most of the negotiating committees. So you were, there was a single person kind of tracking that. You could bury yourself with that.
Yeah.
Makes it sometimes a little harder, if we were going to assign somebody, and if Jake or Maggie aren't interested, I could sit on it, or we could put Ashley on it.
Yeah.
I was on the World's Best Workforce for a long time, if it's changing, I could be more interested than
It hasn't been doing a whole lot.
Yeah, if you're, if you're interested, Bruce, I mean, certainly, we can put you on that, you know.
But it should be more interesting, we used to just go over the report.
Yeah.
Then come to the school board meeting and hear the same thing.
Yeah.
And World's Best Workforce is still going to be something that district advisory is going to take up. But I'll be perfectly frank with everybody, World's Best Workforce is there because it's a box to check and it's a requirement.
Yeah.
It's not really at the core of what is fundamental to Painesville area schools. And so we, it will still be a component, but I would sure hope that that's not what people come to district advisory for as World's Best Workforce, because they're going to be sorely disappointed, they're going to be doing other things.
Okay, I could be interested.
You're interested?
I'll sit on that if somebody else wants to, or
Cheryl, Maggie, you want to maintain?
Sure.
And then just take me off, Bruce on?
Okay.
And on that, when we go to negotiations, we talked about keeping our committees virtually the same, but do we want to change that over with me and Bruce as far as the chairperson sitting on those?
I purposely took myself out of a couple of them here.
Yep.
To have somebody else start stepping in and
Yep.
Maybe I just stay with a couple, where if we look at that
And I, and I'm, I'm completely okay with getting on, you know, the
I think what I found real interesting was that you're kind of in a position, if questions came, some of the questions could come to you.
Yep.
Now, I'm very seldom answering anything, because I've been off and on anyways. But at least you have an idea.
Yeah.
And you're on those committees should something come up.
I do think the board should continue the practice of having the chair on all
Yep.
negotiating committees, I know it is a huge time commitment, and it does, can fill up calendar.
Yep.
But I think just for consistency sake, that, I think that's important. You know, Bruce, I know you have been on negotiations now for a couple of cycles. I think it would be helpful from the district's perspective, at least from a historical perspective, to probably have you continue with maybe teachers and paras.
Okay.
And, and then how people want to fill out the remaining negotiating pieces. I do think all board members should be on a negotiating committee. But that's kind of the structure maybe I would suggest, and ultimately, you guys need to figure out how you want to do it.
I'd kind of like to stay on the teachers' negotiations, it was my first time negotiating with the teachers this last time around, and it was very interesting and educational.
I've been on administration, I've been on food service, I wouldn't mind staying on food service, but maybe adding, I see there's only two for paraprofessionals.
Yeah, well, and we have Ashley there too. You know, that was previously on paraprofessionals.
For teachers, for teachers.
Want to take mine over for teachers? And I'll just be on administration, I mean, I'm fine with giving up teachers.
If we look at
Well, if you're a lot, and I stay on there, that makes room for
Can we go Thomas, Bruce and Cheryl for teachers?
Yeah, as I say, that would make our three.
Yep.
Coming down to paras, it's maybe myself, Bruce and Ashley maybe, that she was existing on there previously.
Okay.
And then myself, food service. And that's where it kind of opens up there again, I don't know. And you're on that. Yourself and Maggie and
And Maggie?
Rick, yep. Administrators, yourself.
Jake?
Jake.
Need one more.
Cheryl, your previous, is anybody else interested in administrators?
Yes, I'd be interested again.
And finally, transportation, myself and it was, was Cheryl, myself and
You said that was going away.
Rick, Bruce.
No, well, it's not going away, it's going to be there, we just settled this contract.
Yeah.
And the contract is good for this school year and next, so I would highly
But your idea is to move it with the administrators, wasn't it?
No, it'll stay on the same cycle, it's just it's already settled for the next two years.
Okay.
So I would highly doubt that during calendar year 2021, that this group would actually meet, unless there would become an issue with our
Within the
contract or something, so.
So I did a good job by adding that one.
And, and I'm
Heck of a job.
I'm okay with myself and Bruce and Cheryl, again. Especially on line if it's not gonna, if it's not likely to meet prior to our next changing this around. Alright, down to meet and confer. Previously was Ashley and Cheryl.
We've never met.
You guys never met? Supposed to meet two to four times a year, is there, is there a reason that?
They have met twice a year since I've been here, so, you know, this used to be a, a meeting that was just an open forum, that people could come to and raise their concerns. There is now an agenda that would be established. I actually had just emailed the teachers today about getting a February meeting on the books, the district has two items. The purpose of meet and confer is to discuss non-contract related issues, which, when you say that, it sounds like, oh, that makes sense. But then when you start thinking about it, and what isn't contract related, it sometimes gets to limit that scope. So what I would suggest here is meet and confer is designed, and we are by statute required to do this with our teachers' group only. And since they are non-contract issues, I would suggest that we stay away from the board members that are
On the contract.
Teacher negotiation committee.
So that eliminates myself, Bruce and Cheryl. Ashley was previously on that seat, we could just keep her as well on that seat as she was previously, and then, again, that's not changing her her current schedule, if she would like to voice opinions, objecting to that later, then we can, we can hear that out at another meeting and or converse that, so keep Ashley on there.
Okay, who's going to join her?
I'm sorry.
And then, you're, you're on the teachers right now, so
I did it my first year, I would be happy to
Yeah, let's see.
Meet or confer, we're talking about, right?
Yep. So
I was, I was supposed to be on it last year, but I didn't make any meetings for some reason.
Do you need one and an alternate?
No, it was two, two people.
No, it's
Oh, it was only
It's just one.
It says one, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, let's throw an alternate on there though.
So Maggie, you want to be alternate?
Sure.
Alright.
Okay.
Staff development, again, previously that was Cheryl, Cheryl interested, Maggie have interest in that as well? Anybody else have some, some interest in that? I would think that'd be an interesting one to be in as well. But the two of you already kind of showing interest, though, you have a preference or Cheryl, how do, how do you feel?
It's very interesting, I've been on it for a year, and I've learned a lot about the teachers and how they work amongst themselves and cooperate in the classrooms, it's been a very interesting
And maybe it is good that you stay on it, if there's a lot that you, you know, they need for some continuation.
Well, if you don't, if you want to really sit on it, I'd kind of like to sit on that one.
Go, Cheryl.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl on staff development. District-wide technology committee, this is one I marked previously, Maggie, you were on that. And if you're okay, anybody else has any opinions or have any preferences to be on that, that would be one that I would be interested in taking.
Yeah, it's an interesting committee, I saw you had checked it, that's why I didn't, because it's only one person, so.
Yeah, that would definitely be one I'd like, be interesting to be part of, so, Matt, if you want to put me on technology committee. Policy committee, need three, previously myself, Rick and Maggie.
I'll mostly on there.
Are you going to stay on the policy committee, Cheryl, you got some interest in that, you'd like to join in the policy committee?
I was on it years back, and I'd like to be on it again, if it fits in with everybody else.
Yep.
Sure, and I was just taking my name off, because I was hoping to get on some new ones, but
Yeah, yeah.
Because I tried to be
Nope, and the same thing, that was kind of my, my reason for not being on it too, is it just a level of picking up a couple of new ones and and I can go back on it, or, right now we have Rick and Cheryl, Jake, do you have any interest in that at all? If not, then, you know, Maggie, you can go back on it if you'd like. Jake and Dots, or Bruce?
I mean, I could go on policy if nobody wants it, I mean, so that way you can find something else if you want, and find whatever.
I should look at, I don't think I'm on there many this year.
I've been, I was on it for years.
Yeah.
So
You can go back on it, Maggie, I don't care.
It's, it's very organized and we've gone through all the policies already, right?
Yeah, I mean, so my personal opinion would be is, the three members that are currently there, I would like one of you there. Rick, I'm glad that you're still there, because it is important to keep a historical
Historical, yeah.
Committee, so I'm glad that that's happening, but now we have gone through all of our policies on our three-year cycle, so now we will start again at the beginning and start going through them again. So this is the time, if there's going to be turnover, to do that, but I would like somebody at least that was on the previous one that completed the three-year cycle to stay. And Rick is obviously doing that, so that makes sense.
Rick and Cheryl and then anybody else than Maggie, take it.
Take it, Maggie, that's totally fine.
I want to go over the policies.
Climate committee, each four times a year, two people, two members needed, that was another one, previously was Rick. Rick, Maggie and Cheryl.
Yep.
I was interested, but
This one's been, no, this one's been stalled, is what this
I'd like to stay on it too, I was interested in, I think we had two meetings originally, and they didn't write anywhere, it was a question and answer type of thing in the evening.
Because I think I was on that too.
Yeah, but then it just went away, nothing happened last year at all.
Yeah.
So we can maintain you guys as it was?
We'll get it back, because I would like to stay if
Was that a three, remember, because we had, this is the thing, we had three previously, I said two.
Because I was on it.
Yeah, and three works.
Three works.
Three works is fine.
Yep, we'll just keep that then.
We just wanted three on, there were three that were interested last year. I'm the same ones.
Wellness committee, twice per year, previously was Rick, yeah.
What is
So this wellness is another one that has to be meeting, it hasn't been meeting, so it is going to be combined also, there's going to be components of this also in their district advisory committee as well. So I would go ahead and get a person appointed to this. I think, Rick, you were on there last year, I don't think we met at all.
I'll stay on again.
But if you're willing to, I think that will work.
Everybody okay with that, Rick, on wellness? And lastly, on our list today, facilities and equipment, previously myself, Jacob and Cheryl. It's the Maggie, Bruce, you're interested. Yep.
I thought I could do it, I was on it for a number of years, maybe four, five years ago and before.
And that's one I think we kind of talked, we're going to kind of kick back up again here. And that's one I think we kind of talked, we're gonna kind of kick back up again here.
So the thing that this group, this group is going to have to get together, I would, you know, I would suspect, we're talking probably in that March window, and really what it's going to come down to is working through the finalization of the indoor air project at the elementary school. That's really the big item that this group is going to need to put together and come back and at least have a recommendation for a direction for the full board to go.
And for myself, kind of having been in some of those meetings to start, I'd like to maintain that conversation and...
Maybe on it.
Kind of to maintain in that conversation and...
I'll come out of that, I don't have to be, I was on it a number of years ago.
I'm hearing Thomas and...
Yeah, myself.
Is there a value of the indoor air quality, having you stay on it with just more historical context or not, or is that...
I'm not in it because I wasn't done it.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, mine was historical, not on this project that they're talking about.
Okay, I think Thomas and I were on the committee that...
Yep, and, and Jake, yeah.
And I can go off it too, I'm fine with whatever, it's not a big deal to me, so Maggie wants to be on it, then certainly.
I think there's three people.
Yep, and myself and Cheryl be...
Oh, I see.
Yep, yep.
Be on and...
I think Maggie would be great, because you bring a different perspective to some of this, because you're involved in institutional kind of stuff.
Alright, so we have Thomas, Maggie and Cheryl. That wraps that up. Now we will need to introduce a motion to... I don't want to say that, introduce a motion to finalize our committee assignment, thank you. To finalize our committee assignments as we have posted on the spreadsheet.
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Bruce?
Second.
Second from Rick. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That's carried. Alright. Schedule regular school board meetings, current practice, we meet twice per month. We have our enclosed meeting scheduled, everybody have a chance to look at that?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the schedule as proposed.
A motion from Bruce to adopt the schedule as proposed.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried. Next. Summary of a school board member compensation, what is the wish of the board? Do we have any thoughts towards changing this? Myself, I don't know that there'd be any drastic need to change any, no real need to change any, that's in my opinion. I don't know if anybody has any other opinions opposed to that.
We changed it a few times ago.
Yeah.
And it hasn't been changed in years, I think we have to ride out a few more years before we even look at it again. I don't know of anybody that's in this for profit.
Nope. And hence it's, yeah, that's why I don't, I don't foresee a need to change, change any of the level of compensation. So we'll make a motion...
Adopt that as...
As scheduled.
As scheduled.
Alright, we got a motion from Bruce, Maggie will second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign? Carried. School district counsel. Matt?
So basically what the resolution does is it authorizes the superintendent to be able to consult legal counsel if that need would arise. The board has approved this resolution every year that I have been here. Obviously in the past, yes, I have had to potentially use that, and hopefully that's not the case moving forward, but it would be very difficult to conduct my duties if I don't have this authorization.
So we'll be looking for a motion.
You have a motion to approve the school district's legal counsel and authorize contacting Matt.
Yeah.
And as written, it would be better to say.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Maggie. All members in favor?
We gotta do a poll call.
We'll call on this?
Yep. One second here, let me get to the right place, Jake?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Ashley absent. Complices.
Motion carried, and to the final, look for a motion to adjourn.
With the board, you now adjourn.
Motion from Jake, second from Rick, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried.